I will call our council meeting of April the 10th, 2018 to order. All council members are present. We have a quorum. It is 7:00 PM. In just a minute, I'll ask everybody in the audience to stand that isn't already standing. And we'll be led in an opening prayer by Senior Pastor Barry Kling of the Church at Trophy Lakes. And then remain standing and we'll be led in pledges to the American flag followed by pledge to the Texas flag by Mayor Pro Tem Rowe. There are flags at the back that we'll be facing, so you won't look at us. We won't turn around and put our backs to you. We'll be pledging to those, so just to let you know, we're not doing something wrong. And so I'll wait just a second. People are still coming in. Do we have a few more chairs if y'all want to try to find a place to sit? All right, this will be a historic moment. The council chambers are overflowing. All right. Y'all can't leave now. You have to stay for the whole meeting. Somebody will listen to all of us. All right, would you please stand? Barry, you want to come forward, please?
The scriptures tell us to make a joyful noise unto the Lord all ye lands. Serve the Lord with gladness. Come before his presence with singing. Know ye that the Lord he is God. It is he that hath made us and not we ourselves. We are his people and the sheep of his pasture. Our Father, we take time to stop tonight to pray and acknowledge your authority and your sovereignty over all of our lives. And Lord, we acknowledge the blessings that you have bestowed upon us as well. Father, I pray tonight for our mayor and our council. I pray, God, you would continue to give them wisdom as they lead and direct our city. I pray, Lord, for our town manager and all of our city officials, the city employees, that, Lord, you'd bless them and give them, Lord, the desires of their heart as they serve here. And, Lord, we're most thankful tonight for our fire officials, our fire chief, and our police chief, and all of our policemen. Thank you for their willingness to every day be willing to put their lives on the line for our safety. We pray your safety on our whole community and on their lives as well. Lord, bless the meeting tonight. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Yeah. Well, that's the one that's on the screen.
Thank you. May be seen.
Just following the cue card.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm Ron Burgundy.
It is now time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete a speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. If someone wishes to speak tonight, back in on my right at the back table is a place for you to fill out the form if you want to turn that in, and you can speak. And the city secretary is up here on my left. So we did have one person who signed up to speak, and that was George Dennis. George, you want to come to the microphone? Please state your name and your address, and then you can address the council.
My name is George Dennis. I live at 1036 Willshaw Drive, Trophy Club, Texas. And I'm addressing an issue of use of the tennis courts, the public tennis courts. I have been a resident here for about 27 years, and I've been teaching tennis on the tennis courts here for about five years. And all of a sudden now, I'm no longer able to do that, and I just wanted to address that issue.
All right, thank you, sir. Now, I think those people lined up behind you were not going to speak but just wanted to show their support. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
Can we clarify that by state law, we're not allowed to respond to this because it's not on our agenda?
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah, they made that very clear.
Okay. All right. So if you want to fill out a form, we'll have it for the record, but I'll leave that up to you if you wanted to fill out a form showing that you supported. All right?
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak to the council at this time? All right, seeing no one seeking to do so and not having an email about that, it is time for announcements and reports. Item number one, receive town manager class's update regarding the following discussion and provide input regarding the same. Early voting, extravaganza, and staffing. Mr. Class.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll start with the early voting. It's for the upcoming May 5th election, and it will begin on Monday, April 23rd. It will run through Tuesday, May 1st. The times and the locations are posted on our town website. The closest early voting site for Denton County residents is going to be here at Trophy Club Town Hall. And for Tarrant County residents, the closest site will be at South Lake Town Hall. With regard to extravaganza, as you know, we had the extravaganza event that took place on March 31st. It was, by everybody's account, a huge success. We estimate that there was anywhere between 600 and 800 of our residents there, and we had over 15,000, that's 15,000 eggs available for the children. I'd like to personally thank Bara Church, Lakeview Elementary, and our town volunteers for helping us stuff all those 15,000 eggs with treats for the kids. And a special thanks to our recreation superintendent, Brian Tenek, our recreation coordinator, Melinda Chalia, who did an absolutely excellent job in putting together the extravaganza this year. So I'm very happy and very appreciative to them. And also, on a really great note with regard to staffing, I'd like to introduce to you our new communications and marketing manager, Jill Lynn. I think you've had the opportunity to meet her, but Jill is right here with us. As I mentioned before, Jill comes to us from the city of South Lake where she was the senior marketing manager. And Jill and her husband, Jason, are Trophy Club residents, and they're also the proud parents of two sons, Preston and Graham. And we couldn't be happier to have Jill onboard with us. So Jill, thank you. Welcome. And that's all I have pending any questions.
Any questions, council? Hearing none, we'll move on to item two. Thank you, Tom. We're going to conduct a badge-pinning ceremony of the newly hired police officers. Mr. Class.
So, mayor and council, I'm very proud and honored to be here with you tonight and have the opportunity to participate in the badge-pinning ceremony for our department's new officers. Captain Steve Woodard, Officer Alex Campbell, Officer Trey Richardson, and Officer Levi Cobbler. And so if Chief Arata would come on up to the podium with me, I'm going to turn it over to him for some opening comments.
Mayor and council, thank you tonight. Citizens of Trophy Club, I appreciate your presence here tonight to honor our newest members of our department. If I might turn around real quick.
You can pull that microphone towards you if you want to.
The badge is a symbol of authority for everybody to see. While this is the most visible component, the true authority is issued by the state of Texas, and it's in our ID cards. But our ID cards stay in our wallets, which stay somewhere else. So, but they're not visible to the world every day, but this is. And that's why it's important as a symbol for us. So, traditionally, the law enforcement community is deep in tradition, and we need to keep that. So this is what brings about today. Tonight is a special honor for all of us as officers who wear the badge, get to spend some time with their family and friends, and go through this ceremony. And it happens twice for police officers. Once when they graduate the academy, they get the honor of being sworn in as police officers and receive their badge for the first time. The second time is when they're honored with her promotion within the police department. And tonight, we have both. We have new police officers that have joined the department, and we have a new captain that's here to help us. It's actually the second highest position in our police department. So I'm blessed to have the honor to doing this tonight, and I'm glad you're all here to see it. So, thank you. Mr. Class.
Okay. So now I'd like to first call forward Captain Steve Woodard. And with Steve, I'd like to call forward his wife Stacy. And their granddaughter, Hope. Welcome. Linda McKinney. Nikki Richardson. And their son, Declan. And Bob, if you're available, I think we have another position open as well. And lastly, I'd like to call Mayor Nick Sanders forward to administer the oath of office to our officers.
All right, this is the first test. Raise your right hand. Okay, passed. So as I ask you to follow along with me, I'll pause periodically for you to say it. And at one place, you're going to say your name. So the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, state your name.
I, time.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of police officer of the state of Texas. And I will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas and the United States. So help me God. Congratulations, man.
We'd want to go back to the flags factor.
Officer, if you want to go back to the right of our flags, we're going to get a couple of pictures real quick. The fact that I had my hand up, did I just swear into the police?
We expect you to have your tro tomorrow night.
Oh, for tro tomorrow night. Stay careful. And Tom is coming. All the group, somehow we got to get in. So if H F you want to special with your family, please do that.
But he brought his students.
Somebody had lots of friends.
Have we gotten all the pictures done? Okay, we will move on then. It is time for the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Anyone on council wish to remove any of the items three through seven? Hearing none, no one wanting to do so? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items three through seven.
I saw a move.
Do you have a second? I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rowe, a second by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Item eight, case ME 18-01, Church at Trophy Lakes Monument Sign. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a request for a meritorious exception for a proposed monument sign to be located at 800 Trophy Club Drive within the Neighborhood Services zoning district. Ms. Payne, there you are, okay. You have the floor.
Good evening. Chapter three of our code allows a party to request a meritorious exception for a sign if it may be not conforming to our code, but it does have some merit to it. It might be something that encourages some progressive design. The Church at Trophy Lakes is requesting this. The reason is they want to replace their existing monument sign, and the sign that they want to put out there, they want to make sure that it complements our existing roundabout entryway sign for the town because they are very close to each other in the same view corridor. And so they want to make sure that that's complementary, so they want to do one that's very similar, curved as well, with metal letters that are backlit. And it's going to, the reason that they are asking for the exception is because it's much larger than what's allowed. By code, monuments can be up to 10 feet tall and then up to 50 square feet. Theirs is about four and a half feet tall, but it's about 155 square feet. So they are over by quite a bit, but they are asking for an exception in this so that they, you know, add some positive view corridor aesthetics. So Pastor Barry Kling is here. If you have any questions, I'm also available.
All right, thank you. And what was the results of P&amp;Z?
P&amp;Z, they had three clarifications. Really, these are three things that were already part of the submittal, but just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, they did unanimously recommend approval with the clarifications that the sign's material and lighting will blend with the town's existing roundabout sign, that the sign will be oriented towards the corner of Village Trail and Trophy Lake Drive, and that the sign will be installed within 10 feet of the property's 30-foot building line to ensure that there's no traffic visibility issues.
All right. Thank you. And so we do have P&amp;Z Chairman Dennis Sheridan here. He said he didn't need to speak unless you wanted to get from him. And as Lisa said, Pastor Kling is here if we have any questions. So at this point, the item is before you, council.
Are you logged in, sir?
Eric, you have the floor. I'm sorry.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Class, I would request in future meetings that staff presents the actual visuals when they're making their presentation. I think it's important for the audience, as well as even though we have it available to us on computer, I think it would be very beneficial to actually do a presentation on the screens.
All right. And I have Roland Rowe.
I'd like to make a motion, but first I want to just clarify, looking at the P&amp;Z recommendations, it seems to me based on the materials that B is met by the applicant's submittal. Lisa, would you agree with that? Where'd Lisa go? There you are. Okay. And the same with C. So Lisa, for you, what is it? The only thing about condition A from planning and zoning, which says the sign's material and lighting will blend with the town's existing roundabout sign, that's pretty nonspecific, so I'm not comfortable putting it in a motion. I understand the intention, and I'm sure that the intention is probably agreed. I'm sure the applicant probably feels the same way, but it was probably their intention in the first place. That's what I was trying to say. But wouldn't that normally be already in the plans that were submitted? Like, shouldn't that already, I mean, is that, are we lacking detail in this submittal that we normally would have? Because I feel like in the past, there's been no lack of specificity in these submittals.
No. All of this is in the plans. I think what came, the reason why this came about was because the location of the sign on the site plan, it's drawn in, just hand-drawn, and so I think that that might have caused a little bit of apprehension from the commissioners as far as, okay, this is just a hand draw.
Exact location.
This is a real, yeah, which direction is it going to face, how close the road is really going to be.
So should we have requested that the applicant provide a more specific drawing relative to the location?
We can do that from now on.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to put anybody through the gauntlet, but, you know, I do think it would be, I mean, I think where someone comes in and wants to change where their location of their fence is, we require them to provide more data than this. So I think that it would be consistent with our policies. And also, just so that it saves P&amp;Z time on having to talk about it, right? Because they can just, it's already in the submittal. But I would like to make a motion to approve case ME 18001, granting a meritorious exception for a monument sign at 800 Trophy Club Drive within the Neighborhood Services zoning district for the Church at Trophy Lakes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. I do have speakers that logged in before we had a motion. I'm going to allow them to speak if they wish to. Philip Schaffner is next.
If you look at the exhibit, the Trophy Club roundabout sign is 32-foot and then five-foot tall, I guess. And the church is 36-foot, which I understand, much larger name, but it's six-foot tall. What is not mentioned here is, what are the letters on, do you know what Trophy Club, what our letters are? Because theirs are a foot. Their lettering is going to be a foot. I was just wondering what ours is.
I don't know what ours is.
It seems like it's going to be a little bit larger than our, the roundabout sign. Does anybody know? Do we know?
Don't know.
All right. Tam, you have the floor.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little flummoxed. I do work to my house, and I have to be extremely specific when I go to get a permit. And we're going to put something out in front, in the, in front of the, one of the busiest parts of town. And I don't mind, I understand, I don't want them to go back. But what I don't, what I want to make sure is, what if they don't put it where you want it? What happens? Because right now, they can basically put it anywhere it's in there.
Same thing with anything else with the fence permit. Someone comes in, they just draw on there, they highlight the line. That's where it goes. But even if it's something specific, regardless, our inspector goes out, makes sure that it's where it's supposed to be.
Okay, yeah, I would say that we need to tighten up some ordinances here moving forward, but I'm fine with it. Eric, you have the floor.
Lisa, does the application meet the requirements of the town?
Yes.
Their documentation meets the requirements of the town?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion, council? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this case ME 1801 for the town. All in favor, show your hands. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it was unanimous. Item nine. Youth Program Standards of Care. Conduct a public hearing regarding an ordinance renewing section 1.08.01, Youth Program Standards of Care, Division One, generally of Article 1.08, Parks and Recreation of Chapter One, general provisions of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances, and providing an effective date. Following that, we'll have item B. Consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance renewing section 1.08.01, Youth Program Standards of Care of Division One, generally of Article 1.08, Parks and Recreation of Chapter One, general provisions of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances, and providing an effective date. We're on item A, which is the public hearing. Did we have anybody sign up for the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak about the, in the public hearing for this item? Seeing no one wishing to do so, we'll move on to item B and we'll recognize, Tony, just to speak to this issue.
Good evening, Mayor, council. There were three revisions made to the Youth Program Standard of Care and I'm just here to address any questions if you guys have any.
So as my understanding that most, if not all of those dealt with some changes in the state, is that right?
The revisions?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the, the, item four, where we crossed out the, removed the Trophy Club Sport Municipal Building, since being that we don't office out of there anymore, we thought it'd be, um, important to just to remove that and just leave Town Hall in there. So that, that's, that's what that was. The age requirement, we changed that to 16 to open up more candidates. We did do some research, performed some research with other cities and that's, um, other cities do that as well, so. The last change was the health admissions. It is now called State Health Services, so the, the name changed, that's why that's, the provision was made as well.
All right, Chair will recognize Philip Schaffner.
Yeah, does this require a public hearing every year, David? It does? Okay, I was just curious.
All right. Okay, would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2018-09.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-09, renewing youth programs and standards of care.
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Rowe, a second by Councilmember Jensen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Item 10. Receive an update from town staff and take appropriate action regarding traffic control devices for the following intersections, Bobcat Boulevard and Trophy Club Drive, Parkview Drive and Bobcat Boulevard, and Durango Drive and Trophy Club Drive. These are some busy intersections and we were wanting more data about it. And Chris is here to talk, but I see Tommy here first, okay. Tommy?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I was just up here to introduce the members of Tignall, Perkins, that actually did the study that was requested in order to decide the, what direction to go with the three intersections involved, Philip Vargis and Chris Hartke.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
What, I'm not, I'm, I'm sort of curious why we did a signal warrant study, because the directions were not given for signal. The directions were given for just do a traffic study. So it almost appears as if we're saying, we as a council made a motion and approved a study to see if we wanted signals, and that's not the motion that was made. And so I'm just curious on why that direction was given to Tignall and Perkins for a signal warrant study.
Just, excuse me one minute. Does the, do the warrant study, is that automatically kicking signals or just, okay, I'll let you go in a second, then, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Basically with the, uh, the study for a traffic impact study, the warrant analysis for a traffic signal is part of that study. And so what we're presenting right here, which is in this giant packet that you all got, is basically the results for the MUTCD, which is kind of the governing body, the warrant analysis of the nine points that we'll look at whether or not a signal is partly justified.
Okay, that I understand. What I'm saying is, is I think what we wanted was a traffic study to determine what best would go there, whether it be a signal, whether it be a roundabout, whether it be a stop sign, whether it be nothing, you know, and I, I don't think that that's what we're getting here. We're getting the numbers, don't get me wrong, we're getting the numbers, I, I just don't think that we're getting what we asked for, I guess is what I'm saying.
All right.
What the motion actually said.
Roland, do you want to ask your question?
No, y'all can go ahead and keep going with Philip.
All right, go ahead.
I'll talk when he's done.
I was just going to say that this is, is basically step one of that evaluation.
Okay.
All right, Roland, you have the floor.
So tell us about steps two through X.
Well, um, what we were going to do today was just present kind of the results, and one of the things that is presented here is a stop sign control, which is currently out there, has, against a signal and how your level of service improves between the two. So...
Real, real quick, we don't have a stop sign at, at all, at, we don't have like a four-way stop, so I guess that's...
Correct, correct.
So, are we all speaking English? We wanted to see options. Are we going to get to see options? Yes or no? At some point, are you done with your, with your work effort here? Or no?
The study is complete. The warrant study is complete.
Philip, do you have the motion handy that we made? Please read it for the benefit of everyone who was here when we made the motion.
Let me get it. Go ahead and say some more stuff.
Hey, Nick. Eric, you have the floor while he's looking.
So I, I understand your concerns, council members. I would like to hear their study and then ask questions after the, after they've given their presentation.
I do too, but I want to make it painfully clear for everyone who's watching and listening.
Trust me, I made the motion. I know what I asked for, but I would like to hear the study, let's go from there.
So Alicia, you have the floor next.
So the data that was gathered can be used to discuss options after the signal options because I think what we're saying here is we wanted to hear four-way stops, three-way stops, roundabouts, any other traffic devices that, that we could use, but the data that's provided would be used to determine those options?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Because I know everyone was getting a little worried about, oh my gosh, traffic lights coming to Trophy Club. Got a lot of messages today about that.
Well, I'm, I'm not categorically against lights, but I...
But we wanted to hear small options.
The, 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 the way things are presented makes a big, big difference when you're dealing with matters of public interest, so I'll just leave it at that. When I ask for, I just, I don't like not getting what I asked for, that's, that's all it boils down to, I'll be quiet.
All right, Philip?
I'm sorry, I gotta go to another page.
Oh, sorry.
That was Bill Rose giving us the citizens' presentation, so let me move to the traffic study.
Okay, it says, so our motion was, and Eric Turati made the motion, and seconded by Councilmember Rowe to approve conducting a traffic study for the following town intersections, and the three that you have. And then I took one off, because there was four, I think, originally, so it, it didn't say anything about a signal. So I think to Roland's point is, is, is this what your, is this direct, the direction that you were given? Or does it change if you were given this motion? That's, that's, I guess, what we're trying to get to the crux of the matter.
Kind of yes and no. So a, a general term of a traffic study is the impacts of the intersection as well as the surrounding intersections. And so we evaluated, since all these are basically tied together, we evaluated all three locations. And as part of that evaluation, we took traffic counts, we took pedestrian counts, and we programmed it into a program called Synchro and basically evaluated different options. But the two that I was presenting tonight were the existing condition with the one-way stop control at each location versus a signal, and it was just a level of service comparison. So it's not a recommendation, it's just kind of reporting the data that the counts generated.
So if, so if we wanted to look at a roundabout, you would have to do a different study? I mean, you would still take these numbers, I assume, but give us different information as far as what it would be like if we had a roundabout, or what it would be like if we went with whatever control device?
Yeah, that's right. We would, we would use these numbers for any type of study and then...
Okay.
Have to look at the footprints and everything else of different things.
So basically what we have is a study that's good, but we're only looking at one option. And so I don't know what we need to do to correct that to see all our options, because you really can't make a decision based on just one option.
Yeah, I think that would be action we would take to expand upon what was done, make it clear what we need to do. I, I know that when I talked to you earlier, you had a series of slides you were going to kind of take us through that summarized all that voluminous data. I'd like to see that presentation, if that's okay with the rest of council, to see what we've got. It'll educate us a little bit.
Okay. So I'll do the, kind of an overview of both the data collection and then kind of what that meant in terms of, of what we looked at. So for everyone here, the three intersections that we studied were Parkview at Bobcat, Bobcat at Trophy Club, and then a little bit south of there, Trophy Club at Durango. And so we performed a 24-hour count, which is basically a video detection count of all three locations over a 24-hour period, and then we went through and manually counted the pedestrians during the peak hour of that, of that 24-hour period. And so, um, basically what that generated was the peak hour, the hour with the most amount of traffic at one point during the day showed as, basically in the morning, 7:45 to 8:45 at Bobcat and Parkview, Trophy Club and Bobcat, and then a little earlier at 7:15 to 8:15 for Trophy Club and Durango. And then it also generated the same version in the PM between 3:45 and 4:45 for the two northern intersections, and then 4:15 to 5:15 for Trophy Club to Durango. And so, um, in the packet, and I didn't do all this, but there is a ton of data, all the individual 15-minute periods, all that other data is in here, but for what we look at, it's really about either the peak hour or the four hour, and there's, there's certain criteria that really matter to most people during most of the day. And so, um, when we looked at a signal warrant, we basically looked at nine different points, and these nine different points are driven by the MUTCD, which is more or less the governing body of traffic. And so I won't go through each of these individually unless you want me to, but what, what that kind of showed us in terms of a warrant analysis, in terms of delay and level of service and how the everyday traffic is impacted, is that, um, Bobcat Boulevard and Parkview met three warrants, meaning that they exceeded the traffic or, or delay for three of these warrants. And, and one of those is the peak hour, because there's a lot of traffic during a very small amount of time at, um, all three of these locations. And then the four hour, which is a, during the period of day, 84 hours, they don't have to be that back-to-back, but if they meet a certain volume of traffic during 84 hours of the day, they meet that warrant. And then the last one, or the, the warrant five, which is a school crossing, that has to do with the gaps in the traffic as opposed to the total pedestrians, like, um, you need to have a lot of pedestrians to meet the actual pedestrian volume warrant, over 100, which none of these have, but, uh, in terms of delays during the school peak hour, uh, Bobcat Boulevard and Parkview did meet that. So there's a very small period of time where there is a decent amount of pedestrians trying to get to school, basically. And then warrant eight, which is roadway network, is kind of subjective. Basically that is if you have a, a residential area or commercial development or something where you would like the majority of traffic to be conveyed to, you want to discourage them from doing side cuts and cutting through, you know, mid-block intersections and things like that, then you would present a higher level of service route, which in this case, our interpretation was that, yes, that's where we want traffic to go through, we don't want them cutting through the other roads in the subdivision to get out to 114 or to get over to where they want to go. And I guess I'd like to ask, if there's any questions on this slide before I move on?
I've got a couple of questions and maybe others will too.
Okay.
I don't drive those intersections at your peak times very often, so I don't have a personal experience with it. So what's lacking for me is how do I understand what's being said? And it seems to me that I have a couple of observations. One is that Bobcat and Parkview, um, has some interesting characteristics about the flow of the entire area to me. And, um, not quite sure that, uh, how well signal will work there.
Yes.
In the case of Bobcat and Trophy Club, when I looked at the data and saw the amount of time that was actually heavy volume, was a relatively short period of time, maybe a couple of hours at two peak times, may, maybe one of them was a little longer in the afternoon, early evening. And I'd hate to have a stoplight that was there all the time and people that had no cars around them having to stop. So you and I had that conversation about how do we, how do we address that issue a little differently? And, um, I really need more information, and for me, I need options, I think that's where maybe Philip was headed. What are our options? Obviously, one of the options is signalization. Another option is, are there ways to deal with some turn lanes or acceleration lanes? What would it take to deal with roundabout? What could we do with signalization that was only active during peak hours? So I just need more data to help me understand where we might head, and so that's just my comments. Anybody else? My iPad is locked up, so...
I'll go for it. Eric, you're next.
All right.
So, uh, in regards to the peak hours, and I'd like Chief Arata's input on this, all three of those intersections, you have people stationed to direct traffic. So I would, I'm curious, is it during those peak hours?
Yes, sir, it is. Because it, it falls right through school zone time.
Interesting. Thank you. And it's all three of those intersections, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Lamont?
Greg?
He's back, he's back, everybody.
Speaking of crossing guards at direct traffic, did, what's the delay time? I mean, you have peak hours, do you got to wait 30 seconds and then they move your section along? That we need a signal light or a roundabout? Is it a serious delay problem? I mean, I live off of Durango, and they, they move that traffic out pretty quick. And if somebody wants to cross the street, a lot of people crossing the street over there, that's why, I don't think a roundabout makes sense. But they push the yellow light, everybody stops, they cross, and they continue. I'd like to know what the delay time is. Not, not number of cars necessarily, at least at Durango. Parkview is a different situation, that's a, that's an elephant over there.
So the, the delay right now, and I do have, I'm going to jump up here, so this is, this, this table here, which is towards the back of everyone's slides, has the individual look at all of the legs, and I know it's hard to read, this was more for me to be able to reference something without having to go through the book if I got asked a question. But, um, for instance, under the current stop control condition, and I wish I had, can I move my mouse?
Yes, you can move the mouse.
So under the, under the current stop control condition, for instance, uh, the northbound left at Bobcat and Parkview, so someone coming north on Bobcat and trying to, or north on Parkview and trying to turn left on the Bobcat, can experience a greater than 300-second delay, which is a really long time in traffic words. And so corresponding to these is, is the... And so corresponding to these is, is the letter, the level of service letter. So an F is obvious, well, is, is the worst. It's A, B, C, D, E, F, same as school. And so an F is as bad as it gets. And it says 300-plus because you can't really model more than 300, than 300 seconds. That it kind of breaks down. And people in those situations don't behave like, you know, normal traffic does.
Right.
So, so we've got, it looks like three spots right now that kind of behave, that basically are, behave very badly in today's situation. Another spot is down at Trophy Club and Bobcat, which would be this eastbound left here. So as, as people are coming on Bobcat and trying to get on to Trophy Club, terrible backup, you know.
I just want to make sure I understand this.
Eastbound left, yeah.
Because I drive that every day. My kid's at Medlin. What you're stating is that we have to retrain the crossing guards because they're leaving those lanes too long.
That's right.
That's what you're stating. Because we have people there. And what they're trained to do is to wait until there's 10 cars back or nine cars back. So I've sat in that lane before, coming out and getting on to Bobcat and wanting to take a left onto Trophy Club Drive. I have to wait until there's a certain number of cars before they do it. It's not a timing thing. So what you're stating is by this rule, we should, we should be training our crossing guards to say at 30 seconds, you have to stop everything and you have to make sure everyone goes. And then we don't have a problem. Because there's no problem nights and weekends. There's, there's no problem during the summer. There's just an execution problem with our staff.
The, the numbers?
That's what the numbers tell me. Because I drive it. Well, you're saying the F. That specifically is if you were sitting out there, you had a lady looking to make sure that she got to a certain level of cars, right, Pat? Before she let them go.
Right.
So isn't it conceivable to say, well, gee, this might be a training issue as opposed to we should be putting in traffic lights issue? I, I would, I would think that would be our next logical step, that it should say that in this plan somewhere. I mean, that's what it says to me conceivably. I mean, that's, what I, what I would have also thought is, and I'm not, it's not your fault, is we should have taken this also on a weekend because then we would have saw there's zero issue. So then we know it's just the school zone and we have to better train our staff if those, now that we know that it's not supposed to get, like, I don't know what a C is, right? A C is 26 seconds, 30 seconds, whatever that is. And what, does that change during school time? Is there a different grid during drop-off? And does the state have a different grid? I don't know if they do, you know? If they don't, then we say, okay, guess what? We have to go back and train our crossing guards that even if there's one person there in 30, 45 seconds, we want to let them go, right? I, I think that makes common sense. Is that what you're saying? Because that's what I'm saying.
I agree with you.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure.
Philip, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I have a few questions. And I, I'm not advocating, I agree with Tim. It's probably more of a training issue. And I'm not advocating traffic lights. But since we have a study on traffic lights, let me ask a few questions about traffic lights. Would this, if we had traffic signals at those three locations, this is probably a, a police chief question, would that, would a traffic signal that, a intersection that is controlled, would it replace crossing guards? Or do you still have crossing guards?
Basically, with traffic lights, we wouldn't need them.
Okay.
Because they'd have the same push buttons and it'd be the delays.
Okay.
We would, we would work with the signaling and timing on the lights.
But, but at, at Trophy Club, at Bobcat, you'd have to put another signal just going on to, to go on to Marshall Creek Drive. You'd have to have another one there because that would back up immediately. That's one of the things that they deal with.
Or if you.
And that's what, just to clarify, what's happening, the, the working, the crossing guards are all working in sync.
Right.
So the traffic doesn't back up right there. Because they, the crossing guards at Bobcat and Marshall Creek time their release with the people at Parkview to, to, so that flow isn't backed up causing delays. So it, it's, it all works in conjunction. So they can't just shut them off and release. So they're all working together. And then they also, it's a little bit hard to coordinate because they're further apart, but the ones at Trophy Club and Bobcat are also involved.
And by the same token, if we put three roundabouts, you would have to have the crossing guards because it would, you would, you would not control traffic.
Cross traffic.
Okay. And then the, the other question, I'm, I'm sure that you can do this. Can you just turn those signals on at the peak time and at other times just have a flashing yellow for, you know, basic flow of traffic to continue and just turn it on during peak times? I would assume that you can do that. Okay.
They can all be programmed.
So I had one question on that. And I don't expect any forethought, so this is just throwing it out there. I don't, I want to make sure we're not stating that if we put traffic lights there, we would pull the crossing guards. Because I think the parents would go bananas if we ever thought that we mentioned it.
No, all I'm saying.
I know, but what was said was we could pull them. We're not stating we would pull them. It's a big difference.
Here's, here's an example, here's an example. You have two crossing guards at Durango and Trophy Club Drive. With a signal, perhaps you could get by with one.
I, I agree with that. I'm just stating, the way we had, we posed that question.
Yeah.
It said.
But I, well, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that with a, with a, with a traffic light,
Right.
you could potentially pull or reduce. With a roundabout, you're going to have to keep that same level. And this is where Bill and I disagree about roundabouts. When I go into a roundabout, I'm.
Bill don't have a vote.
I don't. But I'm looking, I'm looking at the car. And I think we need flashers at a roundabout. Because I look at the car trying to figure out how I can get in the roundabout. And several times have come pretty close to not seeing a pedestrian wanting to cross. I think we need flashers there. But, but again, I'm not advocating traffic lights. I just had those questions.
So I put to speak next only so that I could get y'all to start using it again.
I, I used it. I got interrupted three times, so.
It was on there. Put money on the kitty.
That's okay. All right, Ryland.
One of the things I'd like to look at as we start to drill down on this data is isolating where we have less than optimal right turn conditions and look at what turn lanes might be able to do for us.
Yeah, I agree.
I also would like to consider, I don't know enough about traffic laws in the state of Texas, but I believe there are times where the, some of these intersections would potentially be better served as a three-way stop rather than a stop sign feeding an arterial that doesn't have a stop. I don't know what can be looked at there, but it seems like there might be something there. I don't know if there's a variability as far as if you can have them, have them activated for certain times of day or what. I mean, you know, you can get on your computer and read about anything in, in the world. Surely you can have a stop sign that isn't there all the time? I don't know, maybe not. But yeah, other than that, I, I really do love having all the numbers and data in front of us. So from the standpoint of raw data, I think this is a good start. So that's all I really have.
Philip?
Yeah, and I, I just want to expand upon what Roland said. I, I think a great turn lane would be at Trophy Club going west, I guess it's west, to Durango. You know, I don't know if, you would have to look at that, Tommy, to see if that's possible or if we can kind of widen that and put a turn lane. There's a median there now. But that would certainly be a great, especially those coming from the east that are going to back, to, to move those people over so you don't have the occasional construction worker who has no idea and whips over, you know, and, and to the right lane there. So I, I think that, that's a good idea as far as turn lanes.
Tim? So just a couple of comments. One is, I think, on, on Bobcat coming towards Trophy, Trophy Club Drive and in front of that church. If you made, if you made that right turn, right turn only or a turning lane and made on Trophy Club Drive going towards Bobcat from, I guess it's going west, right? From, made that right turn, turn only during that time because that slows everything down, right? Two people going straight, so then people can't turn. So, so you can automatically get those right turns there. I think you would move traffic along a lot faster. And did you, in your study, did you check? I'm sure you didn't, but everybody cuts through the street before Trophy Club Drive when they're coming from, you know how they take a left? Which street is that? Is that like Broadway or something like?
Mossman, and then it goes to Bob.
Right after the high school.
Broadway and Roseville.
Broadway. So did you, did, did you check that? How many, no. So, so that missed a huge amount of people. So what happens is they come down Bobcat and they don't want to wait at the light. So they cut through, which, and they're cutting through the neighborhood. So, you know, that, that's a real issue. So if you try to put a light or something up there, they're just going to do the same thing. They're going to cut through the, through the, like you said, the thruway. So maybe having a no-turn at that, that point, you know, during that time, something to think about. All right, Greg?
I agree with Philip about the left turn of the Trophy Club Drive onto Durango. Just remind everybody that eight years ago, our roundabout project cost $2.4 million. And the roundabout section of that was almost $1.6 million. So who knows how much that would be today for a couple of hours during a day, school days, when you have traffic issues.
Eric?
So I think based on the report, staff, what do you think? Does this warrant something, anything, nothing?
There, there are some difficult times during, during the travel day.
Is it worth looking into further?
I think it's worth looking into further for some kind of device.
Yes.
It may help. And those devices could and certainly would include something like turn lanes or, you know, specifics as far as that. We've got to be careful because we're so developed. Watching where we put turn lanes and things, if we're working in medians, that's a given. But to obtain property, to put in turn lanes and things like that would kick it over the edge, I think.
Right. So there, we don't have to make a motion to direct y'all to do that. Y'all can do that. And it's probably, this probably warrants y'all doing something, looking for it, looking into it and bringing it back before council would be my suggestion.
All right.
Mayor, we did have Bill Rose sign up to speak. I don't know if he still wishes to speak or not.
Bill, do you want to speak? We all know you, but state your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Rose, 219 Inverness. Well, I'd seen posted someplace that council felt that they lacked input and it was rather quiet in the audience. Tonight certainly was not that case. The agenda item is pretty tightly, pretty tightly crafted to be only, be able to speak about traffic control devices. I would encourage you to look broader. As had been discussed, right turn lanes are an interesting concept. Designate what you've got as a right turn only, be a potential. My preference, needless to say, would be roundabout. And before the mayor throws me off for broadening the topic a little bit, cost is a factor. However, when we did our work before, we found that the cost of a roundabout was very competitive with the cost of signal light, signalization at an intersection. I'm not sure about Councilmember Lamont's numbers.
Uh, Mike Sly's numbers.
Yeah, okay. But, but I want to say that it depends on the aesthetics that you want to put in a roundabout, if you want to do one, and the size. I would imagine that you could do a mini roundabout with several gallons of paint for less than $1,000. But that's not the aesthetics of the community and that's not the level that our drivers are trained to drive at. So would it work? Not well. I, I favor the roundabout for three reasons. I favor it for safety. The, there are a lot of studies out there, Federal Highway Safety Administration. Roundabouts are 78, 80% safer than a signalized, signalized intersection. I favor it for life cycle costs. You put that concrete out there, you don't have to plant things in it. It doesn't need to be a marquee as an entry to the city. And the concrete goes in and you have very little additional cost. You put up lights, you will have rework on those lights, not only for maintaining the lights themselves, but also for their controllers. So you'll have a continual cost there. The last item that I fall into is I just discovered it looking at Sedona, Arizona, in a post on the internet. They lauded their roundabout because of aesthetics. They said it improved the look in an already beautiful area. When I look at Trophy Club, I look at a beautiful place and I see stoplights as being a negative to that impact. I don't think we have a need for them. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Greg?
Just to verify Mike Sly's report that it had to issue after he claimed it was very nominal cost. $1.6 million came from Denton County. $400,000 came from the PID. $200,000 plus came from the mud. And the balance came from the general fund. Roundabout sounds simple. You have to capture property perhaps. You've got to move lines. It's, it's not that easy. And especially over by Parkview, that's where Marshall Creek comes in and Bobcat goes this way, that's a very large roundabout.
All right. Well, I've got more speakers. Ryland?
Yeah. I'm not religiously for or against any specific solution. I want to make sure staff understands, at least for this one of seven votes, I want to hear expert analysis on what the options are. And here's option A, B, and C, and D. And then obviously, A might be better than B for traffic control, but it might be 10 times more expensive than B, right? So that's another decision that we have to deal with, that we have to weigh when we're in this position. So my, so my general encouragement on everybody is just that we, we do as much analytical positioning of available options as we can on areas where we know we have problems and, and we'll take it from there. And I, I know that, that you guys are certainly experts in this area more so than any of us. So I look forward to hearing more.
Eric, you have the floor.
There won't be a perfect solution.
Yeah.
Even though, even the current roundabout we have right now, at the late part of the day, traffic backs up almost to the highway because there's so many people going south and going north. And they, you know, and there's people going to the left and it, it backs up quite a bit. And so if you get a heavy flow in that turn lane before, you know, they've got the right of way and they could just keep flowing through and flowing through. So roundabouts do, it, it's not perfect. You can do, you don't need two lanes. I mean, you can do one lane roundabouts. Many towns have them. South Lake has one lane roundabouts. We have, you know, Indian Creek has a calming lane. We could change it to a calming lane on Trophy Club Drive. I know that would, I'm sure we're going to get comments on that now. But, I mean, there's, I just, I want staff to come back and say, you know, they've looked at this and give us some, some options of what to do. Yes, it's a, it could be really costly to do roundabouts. But here's my other thinking. We are going to be doing some construction on Trophy Club Drive.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, the, so.
That's a time.
Concrete's concrete. So, I mean, it's, it might be the perfect time to do it. That's all I got.
Alicia?
I think in the meantime, a very practical solution would be to look into what Tim said about retraining of the crossing guards, maybe associated with number of cars and a time limit. So, you know, we're not waiting and extend a period of time for more cars to pile up. Because whether we do anything or not, we still have an immediate issue to, to help resolve. So I think by maybe doing some training, like he said, that would at least alleviate some of this delay in the meantime while we're doing all these studies and finding other solutions.
All right. Anybody else in council have a comment? All right, I think we've made a lot of comments. You'll have to probably summarize those and, and maybe give us some kind of report of what you think your direction is so we're more specific this next time. That might be something you give us as here's what you think your direction is or your direction will be that you plan on doing. Give it to us in some type of a memo or something. If we have comments, we can then comment to it so that we get more focused. I really appreciate it having the data, but it was good. All right, anybody else? Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming tonight and for the work that you did. Item 11. Discussion and provide direction to town staff regarding installation of a no U-turn sign at Trophy Lake Drive and Village Trail. So Councilmember Fleury and Jensen had that on the agenda. I think it's self-explanatory. So Tommy, if you want to report.
Since it was a request from council in regards to this, we left it open to give us direction on where you want to go with it or what you needed us to do in order to be placing it. It's not like some signs that you've got to, like a stop sign or whatever. This is informational to help people stay safe. So it's kind of open up to what y'all want to do with this.
I want a stop U-turn. So Alicia, do you want to make some comments? It was your item.
Well, being someone that drives that route quite regularly, I can see a need for it. And I think a lot of members of our community would like to see it as well, but I don't know the numbers. I don't know, I don't have the data. So it was just a suggestion on how to alleviate some of that dangerous area because there are times when it's pretty dangerous over there.
All right, Mr. Class?
I just wanted to point out to council that we had the police department take a look at the reports for that intersection over the last three years. We've had one traffic accident reported in three years at that intersection.
Mr. Lamont?
What do you mean by informational? Someone makes an illegal U-turn, isn't that a traffic ticket?
It's known as illegal right now.
If they make.
You put a no U-turn up, is that just for information? Don't you give a traffic ticket for it?
Informational in the sense it tells them they can't do that.
Okay, but if they do it, can they get a ticket?
I would think so, yeah.
If we make an ordinance.
All right, Tim?
So I drive that, sadly, I go to the gym very often, right there, right? So people know I'm down at that place all the time and other people at Starbucks all the time. And I see numerous times a day that people don't want to wait going out at that bank to take a left. Not even just the people on the highway, just people that are in either Starbucks or that part of the section. They come out and they wait and they say, forget this, and they go down and they cut out, they go through the bank and they cut out where the gas station is. They come through and they bang a U-turn. Happens numerous times a day. Not saying that it's a, that there's accidents, but it's continually stopping the people on the other side because what happens is that's a turn-in lane to go to Tom Thumb. So those people are then waiting there because this person's coming in and cutting through there. So I've been wanting to change this, you know, since I've been on council because it's getting worse and worse and worse. You do still have, not as much now, but the people come off the highway, they come down when the light is red and they go, ooh, it'll be faster for me. You just come down, cut back around and get back on there. So I think it's a good idea. It's not, I'm not saying that there's an accident, but it does create more traffic at that roundabout now, like what you're talking about, because the people are coming off the roundabout, want to go into Tom Thumb. These people are cutting through there because they don't realize they're turning. They have a left turn lane and they cut through there. So that's my little soapbox spiel, but it happens numerous times a day.
Ryland?
Yeah, Tim just described what the symptom is and that's some of the feedback that I've gotten from folks that have contacted me about it. So he's totally accurate in terms of what that experience is and how there's kind of a domino effect of the way it impacts everything around it and puts pressure on all the other points. One thing I want to point out is on the agenda item, it said Trophy Lake and Village Trail, but really it's pretty much anywhere on Trophy Lake between Village Trail and the highway. And there already is one at the first median break. And there didn't used to be because I used to live on Shasta and sometime in 2005, I always used to pop a U-turn there to get on Shasta. Sometime in 2005, we put a sign up. So I didn't do that anymore because I follow the rules. So anyway, I just want to be clear that if we do implement something, looking at the way the street's laid out and how there's only one other cut in the median, where it's currently allowed, and that's what we're talking about, is that nice long where the turn lane is. It really needs to cover that hole. So it may take more than one sign or however you guys have to accomplish it. But I support doing that for all the reasons Tim stated.
Phillip?
Yeah, I had a question. This is asked the police chief now. So we put a U-turn right there by the townhomes. So a lot of people come out of the apartments and used to make the U-turn. Obviously, I understand that that was probably for safety because of no visibility, correct?
Coming from the hilltop, so now they go to the hilltop.
Yeah. So I assume that same situation here, although there's not a visibility problem, but I would assume that if we directed those people into the roundabout, that's a much safer alternative than making a U-turn right there. Even though we haven't had accidents, I would think that that's just safer to put them into the, to the roundabout.
I drive it every day too. And I agree. And we would, if approved, we would extend it to read from the whole area that's open without the neutral ground.
Yeah. And I think that's kind of what we're getting at is just safety. It's safer to go into the roundabout, that's probably a much better alternative.
Eric?
I'd like to make a motion out of no U-turn sign at northbound Trophy Lake, right before Village Trail.
A second.
I don't think you have any action on the.
It says provide action, provide direction. Is that not the same?
Bring back the ordinance. Bring back the ordinance on the next one.
Cool.
The challenge on that is, as Mayor Pro Temros said, describing where we're prohibited in.
Yeah.
Right from Trophy Lake Drive North or 18th or something.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure you guys will be able to vet that out in a more eloquent manner than I did.
Okay, let me.
All right. Just a second. I had someone that made a motion, there's some debate about whether or not it was allowed. I come down on the side that it says provide direction. If you want to make your direction in the form of a motion, you're surely able to do so. I also heard a second. So it's on the floor at this point. I don't think it's out of order unless you expanded your motion too much, but let's hear it.
Okay.
I'll come back to you.
I just, Mr. Dodd.
What I'm hearing is a no U-turn and the best way to describe it in the large open area between Trophy Lake Drive.
Yeah, I stated at northbound Trophy Lake, which is a very short street. I did say right before Village Trail, but I can remove Village Trail if necessary.
Okay.
Okay, let me clarify something real quick.
All right, Phillip?
There's no need to come back with an ordinance because our ordinances say that they have the authority to put a U-turn sign anywhere in town.
There is an ordinance that specifies everywhere in town that U-turns are not allowed.
Correct. We have that already because an ordinance for the one in front of the townhomes never came before us. Stop signs have to come before us, but not U-turns. We have that already in place.
We can draft something distributive for your review. I just want to give you all the chance to review it since we're drafting it somewhere on the fly here. Hold on for a second.
Okay. I think you can look at it, but I think you have the authority to do what you want.
All right. So you have a motion in a second that came before us. It maybe is a little cloudy as to what is there. So I'm going to try to clarify it. Eric, it seemed to me that you were saying you made a motion to place a no to U-turn sign at that particular location. And Ryland, was that your second to agree to that?
Yes, sir.
All right. So realize that there may be some non-clarity by name of street or something, but.
No, I think there's one median and then it's a huge gap until you get to the roundabout. So it's going to have to go on that median, which is the turn-in at Tom Thumb. There's really only one spot to put a sign at. Are there two?
Yeah, we'll put one by Tom Thumb and then we'll put one in the median as it begins before the roundabout. The median extends right after Village Trail. And so we'll put one in the beginning there. So that whole expand is not allowed.
I would make a motion, I'm sorry, Phillip?
No, no, you didn't clear me.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'd make a substitute motion that we refer this item to the town manager and his staff to bring back all the appropriate information for us to take an action at the next meeting.
Okay, let me read the ordinance.
Hang on.
I made a motion, either get a second or not.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. The matter of referral to the next meeting is on the floor. What it really does, it just delays it to the next meeting, you get all the facts.
I don't want to wait any longer.
And so vote it down. Vote the motion referred down, okay.
Let me, let me read the ordinance which goes to the heart of your referral. "It shall be unlawful for the driver of any vehicle to turn such vehicle so as to proceed in the opposite direction or to make a 180-degree turn, U-turn, on any street posted by the town with a sign or signs indicating that such movement is prohibited. U-turns shall be permitted at locations where no sign or state law prohibits such turn." We don't have to do anything. They can do it.
All right. So I'm going to call for the vote on referral. If you want to move forward in a different fashion, then vote it down. All right, is everybody clear?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion to refer, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. I moved it along.
Thank you.
That was the purpose. All right, now we're back to no mo, no, we're back to the main motion. That was made by Eric.
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor of the motion to place the sign as indicated, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. All right. Direction is given.
The direction being to place the sign as wherever you want.
Many as you want, wherever you want.
There's two now.
Her is best.
One at Avalon and.
Okay. All right, realize that became a little bit. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Skip something. All right, item 12. Consider and take appropriate action regarding lighting improvement at Harmony Park. Tony, you have the floor.
Mayor, council, we spoke about this item at our last park board meeting and Chairwoman Nefia is going to be here to discuss it.
All right. Hey, guys, we're just here to get the green light to apply for a grant to expand, improve the lighting at Harmony Park. And we have an opportunity. We got a quote from Musco, is it Musco Lighting? For $190,000 total for everything. If we apply for and are awarded a grant, it would cover $50,000. And we have an agreement with Matt, with the Northwest Soccer Association, to split the cost of the remaining $140,000. All of this would be reflected in the fiscal year 19 budget. So we're just looking to see if we can even entertain that idea.
Ryland?
Nope, she answered my question.
Okay, Eric?
Just disappeared.
What happened? 140, you said 140?
190 is the total for everything. The grant would be 50, leaving 140.
Right.
So the town would cover 70 and the soccer association would cover the other 70. Sorry, I didn't clarify that.
That's what I took from that, just clarifying that they committed to providing $70,000. That's affirmative?
Chairman, Chairman Nefia said so.
An agreement to have 70,000.
Over a certain number of views.
Come up to the microphone so we get it recorded. Thank you.
I would want council's approval on some type of agreement on payments per year and when it would be paid off and that for sure. But yes, the GNWSA will pay 50%.
Wow.
Don't leave, don't leave.
All right, Phillip, you're next.
If we're going to do this, which I've been preaching for, holy cow, seems like my whole life, about going into a capital improvement program with the sports associations, okay? I'd like you to look at other things besides just lights that you need, you know, that you would see as an improvement, that we can go into a capital improvement program that over 10 years, over whatever it is that you paid back, you know, the soccer association. Don't limit it to just these lights. I think it's a good start, but I certainly, I've always wanted the sports associations to give us feedback on what you would like, that the town may not necessarily pay for or get, but that you think is something that would enhance.
I agree, and I think that's a great idea, but this particular grant opportunity is specific to lighting, isn't it?
No, no, no. I think we're going to move forward with that and I have no problem with that. But while we're doing this, we're going to have to draw up an agreement, obviously. And so while we draw up this agreement, why don't we add other things that you think are a need in the association?
That is in the works, just to let you know that the next step for us would be re-crown the fields, which is desperately needed out there and re-install all the, and redesign all the irrigation as well.
Yeah, but that's, I think, something that we as a town would do. I'm looking for capital improvement projects that we as a council would say, well, that's nice, but we're not going to do that. Come to us with those things because we can fund those if we know that over 10 years we're getting, or five years, whatever the number is, we're getting that paid back. That's what we're looking for.
Tim?
So if you don't mind, just answer a couple of questions for me. Are you looking to light parts of this park that are not lit right now?
The fields that are not lit.
Okay, so we just went through a part of town which got lights on a park which did not have it. And now you want to do the same thing. Did you go talk to the abutters? Did you talk to the people that live there that are going to be affected? Because we just had an issue that we went and, you know, screwed up their quality of life, for lack of a better term. I understand this is a park, but again, we had this years ago when lights came on. We're thinking about it now. Did we do any studies showing what will happen to those people's homes when the lights are on all night? Because they don't, they moved to a park that does not have lights and now it's going to have lights and I want lights.
Well, we haven't done that, but we also don't know that we're going to put the lighting in. I think it all pens the.
No, before I would do it is I would make sure that, hold on, let me, that I either, they say yes or no, and then we know that answer before going forward. Or is it going to affect how they're going to do? That all needs to be done before we say yes, in my opinion. I need to know that because it's a huge issue. So Matt, it looks like you had some.
Well, one thing I'll just point out is soccer field lighting as opposed to with the baseball lighting is much lower. So that the light pollution, if you will, that we've dealt with with the baseball fields. But I totally agree with you that however would be best to do it to.
See, I don't know how. Tell you guys to do it.
Well, just how to enlist and get the blessing from the neighbors. This would be on the north side of the park, across from the tennis courts is what we're talking about. So there would be some, you know, we'd want to make sure, we don't want to give you guys heartache later.
Yeah, and I want the lighting to face the park and not back. I mean, there's ways to make sure we get the right lighting that minimizes all that. But I would hate to just go forward and say yes and nobody has talked to those people because it's, we've gotten bit before from doing that.
And just to expand on that just a little bit, these type of, according to Musco, these type of lights do offer 50% less glare and less lighting as opposed to the ones that are there now.
Awesome. Greg?
Guess my question is, after all these years, what's changed that we need lighting? We spent $320,000 for grass on property we do not own for soccer fields. Every time Roanoke is scheduled to have soccer and it rains a little bit, they cancel and we wind up with it when it's already scheduled, which is more abuse on our fields. So what changed? Why do we need the fields here now?
Sure. The association is growing. That's an area that has, we've always had fields, but we've had no lights on during the period of time where, you know, during the situation. The plus for the soccer association is we would rather pay for permanent lighting than rent temporary lighting. We'd rather beautify the park and make it a better capital improvement for the town rather than, you know, give United Rentals more money each year, if you will. So that's, really, nothing has changed. It's been on the wish list. And credit to Tony, he was able to find this grant that can pay a significant portion of it. And because of that, it makes a lot of sense for us to step forward. That's really the reason is that because of the grant. Yes, sir.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
Now, Roanoke, I realize it's a public-private entity, but will you be utilizing those fields in that new development that's coming in? Aren't they building soccer fields?
Yes, they are, north of Fort Worth.
I've not talked to, that is the city of Fort Worth and you're talking about over by Justin on that side? Yes, yes. We are looking at other opportunities to expand because obviously Justin will be growing as well and we want to make sure and take care of those folks, which also we play on those fields as well games and that way that will lessen the usage of Harmony Park as much as possible so that the fields will last much longer.
All right, so I've got the floor next. I think you need to talk to Roanoke because the slide I saw last week showed fields going into Roanoke. They didn't say Justin when they did it. Just be aware of that.
Yes, sir.
And secondly, I chime in on the same type of thing is, before I would approve anything, I want to see a photometric plan that shows me how it's going to bleed to those people. They have an investment in their property and we need to be able to assure them and make sure we're doing the right thing if we're going to do it.[1735.88] I realize that may mean you missed the grant because there's probably a deadline.
There's a couple of them.
But there'll be some overplan and I applaud you for trying to accomplish that task, we just need to get it all done right, that's my point, so Ryland, you're next.
What precludes you from applying for the grant and then, and then in parallel dealing with the, the implementation?
I don't know, I personally think that's the best case scenario, just to take advantage of any potential timelines.
Right.
Whereas we can start the application process, I think the deadline, the first deadline is mid-May and they would approve thereafter.
I mean, asking for free money is one thing, putting up lights, approving a budget item and put up lights is another thing that will not happen until late August. So you're asking me tonight to ask if you can ask for free money?
Yeah, that's what you're asking for, go ahead.
So obviously my answer to that question is yes, we can deal with the other things, give everyone time to vet the design and understand what the impact's gonna be, talk to the neighbors, all that thing. And just real quick, just a point of my personal preference, the other day there was, this is not the super cold weekend, but there was, there was a day about a week to 10 days ago where there had been some weather and our fields were ready, this is baseball by the way, our fields were ready and Roanoke's weren't, I was proud. I don't give a, a you-know-what about what Roanoke does with their fields. I want our guys to, to do the best we can do for the people that we provide services for and I'm, they can do what they want, they have their challenges, I'm sure, and they may have, every, every soil is different, every grade is different, every facility is different. How another municipality or another organization utilizes their assets is, does not impact the way I make decisions. So in that regard, I'm happy, Matt, that you guys are looking at creative ways to try and get more yield out of our, out of our facilities, because these facilities do cost us a lot of money and they exist for the enjoyment of the people that pay for them. So the more we can do to help people enjoy them, the better off we are, as long as we're not overspending, which is why we're here tonight, so that's all I got.
Eric? So, looking at the presentation, five poles, poles one and two already exist, correct? But they're facing south. And so what you're wanting to do is add lights to those existing poles?
Face the north, yes, that's correct.
Correct, okay. What are, do you happen to know the height of the poles at Indy?
I believe those are between 70 and 90 feet.
Okay, do you know the height of this pole?
30.
No, 70, it's on the paperwork.
Oh, yeah.
So they're not lower unfortunately.
Well, I mean.
I know.
Meaning with baseball, they need to shine out so you can see the light at the height, soccer, the ball never.
Based on the, based on the data though, they're exactly the same height. So they're 70 feet is what's on, on here. So the good thing is, they're already, but you already got lights there. You know, we're talking about upsetting the neighbors, they're already there. Pole number three, the only street you're affecting is hillside, if you look at the map, there's four houses, right, that you're really affecting. Pole three's not, it's facing away. Pole five is at Indian Creek.
But you're asking to add more poles.
Yeah, pole five's gonna be a problem, pole four could be a problem, so those are the two that could have some issues with those, those homeowners right there. And, you know, perhaps we could look at maybe not doing those at 70, I don't know, but.
Those will be, those will be smaller age fields, so that, that very much could be a possibility, they don't need to be that high.
Well, the thing with pole four, well, that's true, you only need pole one and two to cover that large field, okay.
Tim?
Yeah, I guess after I had spoke, you said that you have temporary lights out there now.
No, just saying in the past we have, time to time, and I would rather put the money towards something permanent that the town can use when you, when you have an event and that the, you know, the city.
Right, okay, no, I was, when you said that, I thought you have, you're paying for lights now, which would make it a much easier transition. So, but that's fine, I misunderstood what you said.
We have in the past, just off the season.
Okay, so, so I agree with Ryland, which is, yeah, go for the money, but do your homework and get the study here, you know, I really, you know, if I'd lived there and you all of a sudden put up lights and I wasn't involved in the, the decision or the process to make sure that it didn't affect me, I'd be, I'd be very upset. And the way our small town works is, you know, they make a lot of noise, so I would like to be proactive about that.
Alicia?
I was gonna ask the same thing, Tim said I, you had mentioned United Rentals and renting lights, so I was thinking they were already lit anyway temporarily, but it's not an often thing you do just in the past?
We try not to because it does, you know, since we don't have a concrete pad there, those things are heavy and if it rains, those things can, you know, put indentions in the field, so we try to, we don't like to do that.
Greg?
I just want to reemphasize, it's the Greater Northwest Soccer Association, not just the Trophy Club Soccer Association, so as a region, we should all work together. And if somebody closes a field and puts the burden on us, I just think that's unfair.
We should do less, if someone else does less, we should do less, that's what you're arguing.
No, I'm not arguing that.
You are.
We should all work together.
Okay.
If it rains at Roanoke, it's gonna rain at Trophy Club.
We're doing our part.
If I can speak to that real quick, the reason they closed the fields is last season when we put the winter rye down, they took an entire month while we, while we were re-seeding. And so in the spring, because they didn't put winter rye down and the Bermuda's just starting to pop, that's why they were a little more sensitive about moving off the field, just, just want to make sure that was clear.
And nothing to do with rain then?
Well, because it had rained and I was out there checking it, their fields were still, because the Bermuda is dormant, it wasn't soaking up the moisture and that's.
Let me say this, watching my son play soccer Saturday, I still have frostbite, so.
Do you want heaters, is that what you're saying?
Oh, it was brutal. We were in, we were in.
Eagle Mountain?
Eagle Mountain, ooh.
Yeah, there's no.
All right.
There's nothing, just wind.
Looks like there's some direction, Tom, for moving forward with potential securing a grant and for doing what might can be done appropriately and of course, talking to the neighbors.
I'll make a motion to direct, direct staff to apply for the grants as, as presented here on the agenda.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Roe, seconded by Schoffner, to direct staff to go ahead and apply for the grant. Any other discussion on that point? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous.
You abstained.
I counted my vote.
He was, he was counting first, wasn't he?
I only have so many raises in the right hand. All right. Item 13, discuss and take appropriate action regarding town activity and public information and public relations related to PD 30. Mayor Protem Roe and Schoffner places on the agenda.
Yeah, this was kind of my idea to discuss real briefly, I have a very specific request, I'd like to have Mr. Klass consider the possibility of, as we all know, that's a fairly, that's obviously a very large mixed-use development in Trophy Club and some, starting to generate some action over there and there's been some press coverage. In particular, there was an article in the Fort Worth Star-Telegram, then there was a story that Nick was interviewed for that was done by the local NBC affiliate. And in both cases, there were glaring factual errors. And I saw the stories immediately, I saw the errors immediately. What I would, what I would appreciate if our staff could, could look into is just keeping tabs on press coverage for that particular project, because it is something that catches everyone's attention when it comes up. And if there, if there are actual, if there are factual errors in the, in the stories that the town makes some, makes some public effort to simply post the, you know, post a, post some corrections and clarifications, it doesn't need to be any kind of big to-do. I would just like to have something on the website that's linked to via Facebook or Twitter or both that I can point people to that says, yeah, I saw that story as well, rather than me have to go through and, and explain over and over to everyone that asks, can say, yeah, we looked at that, our staff looked at that, there's a few things that need to be clarified, you can go here to read it.
I think that's a great point.
That's something I'd like to hopefully see us do, because it's not gonna be, it's gonna be an intermittent thing, you know, it's gonna just come up when it comes up, but, you know, with a, you know, with a, with an ear to the ground for that stuff and then it should be pretty easy to kind of take care of it when it happens.
Yeah, I tried to get them to publish a correction on a couple of things they did wrong, but they're not gonna.
Oh, no, they don't.
Publish an article, they, they don't really care.
Yeah, it's not that big of a deal to them.
And of course, I hated the headline that was in the newspaper that said.
Out of order.
He's just speaking.
He cleared me.
Philip?
No, I agree, I'd second this because, or put it on the agenda because, and Jill, you have your work cut out for you, because if you go on our website and just type in PD 30, there's so much different, you know, because we've had a lot of different meetings about this and different designs, different things like that, but I agree with Ryland, it may be good to go in there and try to clean that up as much as possible and put factual information that resident, that we can point residents to, to say, this is, this is what is approved, this is what they're required to, to abide by. I, I think one of the things that Scott Beck said was that they're gonna put apartments on top of a garage, which was not true, that's not what we're doing, and so, so I agree with Ryland that it would be good to have something to point to, to say, okay, that, that's, that would be nice, but this is reality.
All right, anybody else?
So we're not getting a Four Seasons?
Or the Bellagio Fountain.
You noticed that in the drawing?
Yeah. Or the Three Forks Restaurant, that burned down to the ground, obviously.
Okay. All right. I heard all positive comments about trying to control that better, Tom, and get our word out when they do it wrong. All right, moving on to item 14, discussion of items for future agenda agendas to include agenda items for consideration on the April 24 council agenda and items for the town council future agenda list. So page 301 was our tentative next agenda. First item that I saw, and I think it was probably there as a placeholder under number one, was volunteer appreciation reception. Not quite sure what the plan was for having that on the agenda at this point, so can somebody expand on that?
More for an update, we had it June of last year, so that was just to let you know staff is working on that. We don't have a, a date set, but it's just for an update.
All right, so you'd have something for us to discuss, is what you're saying at the next meeting?
It's just an update for.
Okay. Tom, do you have a comment?
No, it's just that I'll be updating that what our plans are and, and giving some, hopefully by then some specific dates.
All right, anybody else have something about the April 24 agenda?
I sort of do, I would like to have a placeholder, placeholder on each executive session to have the potential to talk about Trophy Wood. I, I think that we had sort of indicated that, just that, just that generic wording that Tim and I agreed to. I mean, we may not do it, but. There's a lot of moving parts going on and I think it would be good to just have that as a placeholder.
Call it PD 25?
Or whatever the.
Or is there, or we can describe it geographically between.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, there, there's wording that, there's wording that Tim and I agreed to at one point, so we can just use that, yeah.
We did have it on the past, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
We did, yeah. All right, so the suggestion is put that on each meeting so that we can deal with it.
Right, until we resolve that.
All right, anything else, anybody else for the next meeting? All right, hearing nothing, let's move to page 303 and 304. I'll give you an update on item number two. I attended, along with Tommy, a tech stock public hearing last week where I think the 80% engineer drawings or whatever they called it, maybe it was 50% engineering drawings, 60%, okay, it was some percent. There are plans to build service roads or feeder roads all along 114 in places that they don't exist today. So that includes South, South Lake, West Lake and Abutts Trophy Club on this side, West Lake on that side. There is plans for a Texas U-turn at Solana Kirkwood going both directions. I see that as a positive for our restaurants, that means people going east could exit, make a Texas U-turn and be back at the restaurants. The other thing that's happening is they're changing the exit and entrance directions. So where now you exit before you get to Kirkwood, go through the Kirkwood light, come down the service road to Trophy Wood Drive, that exit would be immediately after the bridge, but would be designed in a fashion that you can still cross the traffic and turn right on Trophy Wood. And they're doing that to reduce traffic.
This is a future agenda.
I know, but it's all about Highway 114. So I've given you that as an update, all of that deals with the fact that we're trying to put in necessary equipment for irrigation, for beautification of that area. I know you didn't like it, but.
Well, I mean, if you want to add an agenda for the mayor's update, you're welcome to.
Or the property owners at Solana told me all that three months ago when I was looking for office space, I could've told y'all, didn't have to go to a meeting.
All right, Eric, do you have anything for these pages to add to?
No, sir.
Good, okay, let's move on. All right, so let's move to item 15. So in just a moment, we all go into executive session. Item 15 pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene an executive session to discuss the following. A, section 551.074 Personnel Matters under section one, subsection one, to discuss or deliberate the appointment, evaluation and duties of a public officer or employee. One, quarterly goals, goals and objectives of council-appointed employees. Item two, crime control and prevention district appointments. And item three, Denco Area 911 District Board of Managers' recommendations. And item B, under this, is section 551.071, consultation with attorney under subsection two, to consult with a town attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Department of Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, specifically breach of contract issues. It is 8:46, we're in executive session. We're getting ready to start, guys. Rock, roll. Council, if you will, come to order. It is 9:30 PM, we have reconvened into regular session. Item number 16, consider and take appropriate action repealing resolution 2017-39 and adopting a new resolution, filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term on the Crime Control and Prevention District Board, reaffirming existing appointments and providing an effective date. The chair would recognize Eric Jensen for resolution 2018-04.
We interviewed three candidates, all were very good candidates. Like to make a motion to repeal resolution 2017-39 and approve resolution 2018-04, appointing Leo Daniels to place five, filling a vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term on the Crime Control and Prevention District, reaffirming existing appointments and providing an effective date of April 10, 2018.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, second, you seconded, right, okay. So any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. All right, item number 17, consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution of the town council nominating one candidate to, to a slate of nominees for the Board of Managers of the Denco Area 911 District and providing an effective date. Chair would recognize Craig Lamont for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Jim Carter to the Denco Area 911 District, effective April 10, 2018.
And approve a resolution 2018-05?
That sounds good.
I'll second.
Councilmember Lamont moved, Roe seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, it passed. Item 18, consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Anybody have any action to take via our executive session?
We appreciate it.
What did you say, I couldn't hear you, were you in the microphone? Okay, then we have no other action, it is 9:33, we stand adjourned.